Good morning. I am calling to order a regularly scheduled meeting of the Committee of the Whole. My name is Elizabeth Glidden. I'm the Chair of this committee, and I'm joined by Councilmembers Wright, Council President Johnson, Councilmember Andrew Johnson, and Councilmembers Yang, Quincy Goodman-Frye, and Palmasano. We are a quorum of this committee. We have two items on our agenda for today. The first is a presentation of an information governance ordinance, and we also have a public hearing set on that. And I believe it's Mr., I'm not sure who's the presenter here, Christian Rummelhoff. Why don't you come on up? It's your turn. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam Chair. (pause) Have you told me yes? Good morning, Madam Chair and Councilmembers. So I'm Christian Rummelhoff. I'm the Assistant City Clerk, and I lead the Records and Information Management Division in the Clerk's Office. I'm here today to talk about the information governance ordinance that's being proposed. I'd like to really deal with three items today. So give a little bit of background about what the ordinance is, why the reasons for the ordinance, talk through the language of the ordinance, and then finally go into how this helps move the city forward. One item I think we should probably start with is a definition of information governance. You're going to be hearing these words a lot over the next few minutes. So when I talk about information governance, I'm referring to that set of controls, policies, procedures, training, and systems that enables and ensures that the city appropriately manages information. By this, I mean that we create, receive, secure, store, access, retain information in a way that both complies with requirements, manages risk, but also maximizes the value of information so we can use it to be more effective in our work. So why we're talking about information governance today at all? In about, in 2015, the Internal Audit Department examined the city's approach to managing records and data across the enterprise. The audit concluded the city lacked an effective framework to manage its information assets. And this slide you see in front of you recaps the audit's application of an industry-standard information governance maturity model. As you see, the audit found much room for improvement. But I was struck by a quote from the audit in the cover letter. The auditor said that "The current program is disjointed with various policies and projects put forward independently by a single stakeholder group. Perhaps the greatest opportunity is to provide a framework for increased collaboration and accountability amongst the various stakeholders." So about one year ago today, the Clerk's Office presented a response to the audit. We agreed with the auditor's findings, and we worked over that time to leverage the audit to plan a path forward. So since then, we've been working hard on various elements on that path, and this is one of those elements, the information governance ordinance. So it's one element, but we see it as foundational. And with this background in mind, I'd like to walk through the different languages in the ordinance. So, Madam Chair and Councilmembers, you should have copied the ordinance in front of you, and there's copies up by the clerk as well for the audience. So as you can see, it's fairly short, and it really has three main sections. In 41.10, it establishes the information governance ordinance. Here, it also ties its purpose and interpretation to the three foundational state laws relating to government records and data. These laws are the Official Records Act, which prescribes what records government must keep; the Records Management Statute, which talks about how government data and records must be managed, maintained, and disposed of; and the Government Data Practices Act, which governs who may access records and data and under what conditions. The second section, 4120, does two things. First, it establishes a broad scope for the ordinance. It's all city departments, personnel, and officials, and all city records and data. Secondly, it sets forth the goals of the program. And this includes establishing information management standards, but also in A2, it recognizes there should be consistency across the enterprise while recognizing that city departments may have unique operational needs and constraints. In A4, it promotes managing information in a way that allows it to be shared. And this can be sharing through public records requests, through an open data portal, but also collaboration within the organization to improve how we work together. Perhaps the most important section to the ordinance is 4130, which details roles and responsibilities. It creates a new staff committee, the Information Governance Policy Committee, to handle the maintenance and implementation of the information governance program. This committee will establish, align, and maintain the necessary enterprise policies to affect the program. So recall the line from the audit about the program being disjointed and the policies and programs were independently advanced by various stakeholders. The staff committee builds in multiple stakeholders. It recognizes information governance requires a multidisciplinary approach, and so it builds in the city coordinator, stakeholder charged with collaboration and coordination across the enterprise; the city attorney, the stakeholder concerned with legal risk, compliance, discovery; the chief information officer, stakeholder responsible for enterprise technology, systems, and business intelligence; and the city clerk, the responsible authority for the city and the ultimate head of the records and information management program. The committee then takes, builds in, it's a single entity, but it builds in these multiple viewpoints. These are the stakeholders who are most directly tasked with information management issues at an enterprise level. So in the blue circle around the IG Policy Committee, you see city council. This reflects that the IG Committee itself reports to the city council in 4138-2. This reporting structure anchors ultimate policy oversight of the program in the city's ultimate policymaking body, the council. In 4130B, department heads, we discussed departments, department heads, and a new role, the department records liaisons. So department heads remain responsible for compliance of the department with the program, but there's a new role that's formalized. It's tasked with managing the implementation of the program within the department. This liaison can be the department head or can be another senior official within the department. By creating the departmental records and data liaisons, we mirror the role clarity created with the staff IG committee. So the enterprise has a designated body to deal with IG issues, and each department has a designated role to deal with these issues. This helps with accountability and collaboration throughout the system. Now importantly, beyond designating these roles, the ordinance doesn't create new obligations for departments. Departments are already responsible for complying with the numerous existing requirements, such as those imposed by state and federal laws, other enterprise policies and ordinances. But recall that the audit found the policy framework to be disjointed, so it hasn't always been clear to departments how they can effectively comply. With the ordinance and the new IG Policy Committee, the policy committee is tasked with establishing and maintaining a policy framework. We expect this to result in additional clarity for departments because the policies will be harmonized, updated, aligned, and effective. So as a result, the ordinance creates a clear line of accountability and communications from governance through operations and from the top of the organizational chart through the bottom. It formalizes, tries to formalize the best of what's working now and make sure that it's sustained going forward. So there's an additional element here I'd like to show. This isn't part of the ordinance, but the ordinance provides a foundation for additional programs to help implement information governance in the city. There's two brief programs. I want to show how they rely on the ordinance to be effective. So one is the 10 Steps to Information Governance Program that the Clerk's Office has been working on as part of the audit response. And it builds on the framework created by the ordinance by leveraging the departmental liaisons and by reporting to the Information Governance Policy Committee. The program itself is modeled on the best-in-class approach used in Austin, Texas. So where the staff IG Policy Committee will harmonize and update the enterprise policies and program, departments remain responsible for departmental programs. The 10-step program helps ensure that departments are not left on their own, but instead are provided direct support and implementation. So my staff will work with each department to assist development and implementation of the information governance program in their areas. It's done iteratively through a series of 10 steps in each of the departments, in some cases in various divisions. Each step has training tools and resources that we will be bringing to it and ends with a concrete deliverable that departments can immediately use to implement the program. The strength of this approach is that it breaks up the monumental task of applying information governance across the enterprise into iterative steps that are each accomplishable. And why it works, or how it works with the ordinance is that it relies on the accountability framework so that we can make sure that we're moving forward, we can pause for the natural breaks in attention that different emergencies might raise, but we know we have an entity tasked with overseeing this and with measuring the forward progress. The second element that ties in with the ordinance that I'd like to share is the central support model that my department is starting to reorganize into. So thank you to the mayor and the council. We're currently adding a records management specialist as part of the 2017 adopted budget. We're restructuring our division to better support department implementation of information governance-related matters using a model such as Finance and HR use, providing a dedicated specialist supporting a group of departments. So each department will have a dedicated person, in-house person with subject matter expertise that they can rely on to provide training, guidance, project management support on these issues as we work through the implementation of the program. This would include the 10-step program as well as other initiatives. So we're excited to move forward on these and the other initiatives discussed in the audit response. And the ordinance, I think, is a foundational element, but is only one part of the entire program. And here, that concludes my prepared comments, so I'd be happy to take any questions.
So thank you very much for that presentation and also centering us on kind of the course of action that's happened, how you worked with the audit department, how this was an issue that the Clerk's Office has always wanted to champion and make sure that we had better systems for addressing. And so thank you for that. We are scheduled for a public hearing, so I'd like to go ahead and if there aren't just informational questions, go ahead and open and then close the public hearing after those have had an ability, and then we'll kind of return to if there's discussion and kind of moving that. If I might, we will go ahead and open the public hearing, and I'll ask if anyone is here who'd like to address this. I'm not seeing anyone, so I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And then I don't know, I know Councilmember Johnson had had his little tag up and sort of Palmasano, and then if you wanted to move the ordinance, then that would also start our discussion.
First?
Okay.
Great. Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I just want to thank, I want to thank the people here in the audience that have worked so hard on this. I want to thank Mr. Rummelhoff for taking this up and making this important throughout last year in response to the records management audit. Thank you to our internal auditor, Will Tetzel, who's here doing his thing. Now we get to codify this. As Christian said, this isn't, this is just, I'm sorry, so that it's not just up to the people here in this room, so that it's not just up to Christian and the people that he's worked with over the course of this year, but so that there's a way for our government to run more transparently and to run more smoothly going forward here in Minneapolis. So this is, this is a big deal. This makes what we do in information transparency more a part of, more a part of the foundation of our government. This ordinance comes directly out of response to the 2015 records management audit. It was one of the first audits we did under our new audit department, and I think this is a good model for how we use the audit function to drive improvements in how we operate here. I appreciate the collaboration that was done. It was the Clerk's Office, the city attorney, IT, Mr. Dollis here for this presentation as well, and the city coordinator. And it really talks about how they partner together and help make decisions together. We've seen sometimes shocking issues on the national stage over the past year about information and about email. There are currently bills at the state legislature regarding the management of government information, and the audit, the response, this ordinance, and the other program elements are going to help put us ahead of the curve in handling these issues. So next week, next Thursday, March 16th, is the National Freedom of Information Day occurring during what is known as Sunshine Week, which is a time where we recognize the importance of a transparent government. So it does, it has taken a while, but there is no better time than now to consider how we manage our information, because to be effective, transparency depends on the information being there and being kept in a way that we can find it. So of course, information governance goes far beyond transparency. It's also about security, it's about risk, it's about compliance and efficiency, but nevertheless, it's an appropriate time to recognize the importance of this work. So with that, I'd like to move this ordinance forward.
Okay. Fantastic. Thank you, Councilmember Palmasano, Councilmember Andrew Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I just wanted to thank the various departments and staff who worked on this, especially the Clerk's Office and the auditor. I also wanted to thank Councilmember Palmasano for her leadership on this. It's not necessarily the sexiest issue, but it is a very important one to the enterprise as a whole, and I think Councilmember Palmasano especially has stepped up on this, and I'm really glad to see this item brought forward. I think it's really important overall for the reasons that she mentioned, and I'm glad it's before us.
All right. Anyone else who would like to comment on this ordinance? I'm not seeing anyone. So all in approval, please say aye. Aye, approved. And that item has been approved, so thank you very much. Next, we have a discussion item from Human Resources, and we traditionally have an update to the city council on the results and findings from the Employee Engagement Survey. And so we have our team up here. Mr. Bernardi, I'll let you get some time to get set up. Welcome.
Good morning, Councilmember Glidden, members of the Committee of the Whole. My name is Chuck Bernardi with the City of Minneapolis Human Resources Department. I'm joined by my colleague Mary Lynn Talarico. She's also from Human Resources. We're going to be co-presenting this morning, presenting the results of the 2016 My Minneapolis Employee Engagement Survey. And if there's any questions, feel free to ask. Before going into the details of the survey, I would like to thank the city council for dedicating ongoing dollars to support the creation and administration of the employee engagement survey. This is really an important effort and helps us understand how our employees perceive the city as an employer. So today's agenda, we're going to go over the overview of employee engagement, basically employee engagement 101, survey administration and design. Then I'm going to turn it over to Mary Lynn, who's going to go over the results of the survey, and we'll talk a little bit about action planning and next steps. So here's a, one of the definitions that we've used as to describe employee engagement. Engaged employees apply their unique skills and abilities in a way that best meets the needs of the organization. Full engagement goes beyond simple job satisfaction. Employees embrace the city's mission in a way that inspires and enables them to apply their discretionary effort, resulting in better services to our constituents. Why is this important for an employer of the City of Minneapolis? If we have an engaged workforce, we can expect we have employees that are two times more likely to stay in their current job, they're two and a half times more likely to feel they can make a difference in the City of Minneapolis, and they're three times more likely to report feeling satisfied with their job. Engagement creates an environment where people want to stay. They can see a place for themselves, they can expect success here with the City of Minneapolis, and they can see a future for themselves in the city. Employee engagement supports and is strongly aligned with supporting the city goal, the city that works. City government runs well and connects to the community it serves. It also aligns nicely with a strategic direction. Engaged and talented employees reflect our community, have the resources they need to succeed, and empowered to improve our efficiency and effectiveness. This particular slide is trying to show the difference between an engaged employee or an engaged workforce versus an engaged employee or simply a satisfied workforce. On the vertical axis, we have performance. On the horizontal axis, we have time. You can see the difference as a satisfied employee would simply, may just do the minimum to get by on the job. They do what they have to do to maintain their employment with an employer. So those employees that are more engaged, they're more likely to exhibit or use their discretionary effort. They want to do things, they want to contribute to the organization's success, they want, they take initiative. They're more engaged, their performance is higher, resulting in better service to our Survey administration and design. A little background, the City of Minneapolis started doing employee engagement surveys back in 2004. So this is actually the sixth administration of the survey. This year, we entered into a new agreement with a new partner called Perceptics. We also eliminated paper surveys this time. That was the first time we did that. That's why you see a staggered survey administration in 2016. The Convention Center and Public Works were most impacted by the elimination of the paper survey. A lot of their, a significant portion of their workforce did not have day-to-day access to a computer, so we opened the survey up earlier for the Convention Center and Public Works, and we actually started working with a number of departments back in April of 2016 in preparation for the survey. Convention Center and Public Works, Convention Center was October 5th to November 4th, Public Works was October 5th to actually November 30th. The rest of the city actually took the survey between November 7th and November 30th. These efforts resulted in the highest survey response rates for the Convention Center and Public Works since the survey has been started in 2004. Regular and seasonal employees were invited to participate in the survey. Almost 3,900 employees were invited to participate. Some of the survey changes, we added two new indexes. We'll get into that in more detail later, a communication index and an equity index. We also decreased the number of survey items for most employees. There were custom questions added for police and fire employees, and we also added an important scale, which I'll talk to in a little bit. In addition, we're trying to implement a multi-level sponsor model through our action planning, which we'll get into later as well. Overall, the multi-level sponsor model, what we're trying to show here is we're trying to drive action planning and change down to the supervisor-manager level. In the past, we've had executive sponsor, which consisted of elected officials, city coordinator, and the chief HR officer, department heads, division directors, but now we're trying to get down to that next level of the organization, immediate supervisors, the managers, the foremen, people on the streets working with the employees on a day-to-day basis. Throughout this process, these groups of employees have been supported by Human Resources, Communications, IT, and our survey partner, Perceptics. A little more information about the survey, you can see on this slide, it has quite a bit of information, but all city employees were asked 54 scaled items. There were various categories ranging from clarity of direction to supervisor relationship to performance management, customer service. We also had, as I mentioned earlier, a communication index and an equity index. We also had a typical agreement scale, which going from strongly agree to strongly disagree. But what we added this time was also an important scale, where an employee not only had the opportunity to tell us how they felt about a particular survey item, but they also had the opportunity to tell us how important it was to them. This should help departments on action planning as if a person viewed something unfavorably, but they also don't think it's important, we wouldn't want to spend a lot of time and effort on trying to fix that. This next particular slide has a lot of information, and I know we're, I'm not sure how much time we have, but if we're doing okay, okay. 64% of employees completed the survey. Again, about 3,900 people were invited to participate. About 2,600 people actually started taking the survey. That doesn't mean they completed it, but they actually logged in and completed, took it, answered at least one item. About 2,500 employees actually submitted the survey, and on average, it took an employee 14 minutes to complete the survey. Of the 22 city departments that participated, 16 of them exceeded an 80% response rate. As I'll get into in a minute, some of the words that were described to describe the city's work culture were diverse, fun, friendly, supportive. Dignity and respect scored 6.7% above the Perceptive benchmark. Intent to stay retention was also above the Perceptive benchmark. Some of the opportunities identified in the survey were improving honest two-way communication across the city. The city unfortunately scored far below the Perceptive benchmark on that, and we're going to get into that a little more later. There's also some ideas for short-term and long-term things that the city can do to improve its engagement in the future. This particular slide shows the detail, more detailed information about department response rates, ranging from four departments that achieved 100% response rate down to a department that had a response rate just over 33%. Top strengths and opportunities. A primary strength is defined as it's viewed favorably by employees and it's also important to employees. A primary opportunity is identified as less favorably by employees, but is also important to them. Primary strengths in the city are pride in the city, city employees are proud to work for the city. This is consistent with previous survey results. And supervisor relationship, employees responded very favorably to their relationship with their supervisor those questions, and that again is consistent with previous surveys. The engagement index is the highest it's ever been since I've been involved in administering the employee engagement survey, so we have some great news to share with you this morning. Some of the opportunities that were identified are resources and support, teamwork and collaboration, communication, and growth and development. As part of the survey, employees were asked the question, what three to five words would you use to describe your city's work culture? So the employees typed those words in, and this is what is called, you've probably seen these before, it's a word cloud. So the bigger the word, the darker the font, the more times that an employee uses that particular word. At the top of the list is the word diverse. 239 employees mentioned that particular word when they were responding to this question. Fair, good, fun, friendly, dedicated, supportive, political, collaborative, and challenging, were some of the other words that came out on top. Employee engagement 2006 to 2016. As I mentioned earlier, we saw the highest levels of engagement since we've administered the survey. 2006 to 2009, we saw a drop. We also saw that's when the housing crisis was, and we had economic, a lot of economic challenges at that time. That continued to be stable from 2009 to 2011. In 2014, we saw an increase, and then this last time, we saw a significant increase. Now, this is somewhat misleading in that the items that comprise the employee engagement index are not the same as they were from 2006 to 2014. But even, even when we compare just the same questions from 2014 to 2016, we still saw an increase of about 7% across the organization, and so this is statistically significant. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Mary Lynn, and she's going to get into more of
Good morning, Chairman Percy Glidden and committee members. So looking at the 2016 survey results, we're first looking at the employee engagement index, and we see that there are five questions in this index or five items included in this index, and we are showing, I would say, very positive results, looking at the favorable response overall average at 79%. As compared to 2014, you'll see that there are improvements in three of the four questions that were actually included in both the 2014 and the 2016 survey. One item did go down slightly, but it was not a significant decrease, and that is, I understand how my work links to the goals of the city. You'll see on the bottom of this particular page that anyone who responded to all five of these questions with a favorable response might be considered highly engaged. That's 50, or excuse me, 49% of the 50, or excuse me, 49% of the, the workforce who were respondents, and 51% responded in a way that either one or more questions were either neutral or not, are, were unfavorable. This simply means that we have 49% of employees who are highly engaged based on that definition, and other employees who may be somewhat less engaged, does not mean they're not engaged. So when you look at the employee engagements, there are the items that were listed previously, but there are also other items that are connected, if you will, from the perspective that they are drivers of employee engagement. And what this particular chart is trying to show, which is really very interesting, are those people who are considered highly engaged, that is, that they answered all five of those other questions that we just talked about in a favorable manner, also rated the drivers of engagement significantly higher than those folks who were not as highly engaged. So when you look at this, the increase in, or excuse me, the, the range goes from approximately 38% all the way to 49% higher response on these driver types of questions. So what, what this means really is that there are some certain keys to engagement. One is fostering anticipation of future success, and we see that with items 52 and 25. A belief that the survey feedback, feedback will be used, that employees actually believe that leaders will do something about the survey results. And then we see that with items 30, item 5, 10, and 15. Also that there's honest two-way communication, looking at items 38 and 53. And lastly, that there's resources and support, and, and that we believe in continuous improvement, and those would be items 29 and 34. We learned from the 2014 survey that employees who believe that action will be taken, that they heard the results and they saw results, or they saw actions taken, are 38%, 38 percentage points more engaged than employees who did not, did not believe that action was taken. That's a clear, I think, ringing of the bell to tell us that it's very important that we do follow up on the survey results. The survey, of course, is just the beginning of the conversation. This next slide entitled Land of Opportunity, this is a 2016 result, our Department leaders have taken action based on feedback reviewed from the 2014 Employee Engagement Survey. What's most notable about this is that there are 44.2% neutral response here, and you might expect that given that it's been about two years since we had a, a survey. People change positions, people forget about it, sometimes, of course, assuming that the actions have been taken, that perhaps it was something that leaders did and employees might not have been involved with. So when we think about this as a land of opportunity, it's much easier to influence people to move from neutral to favorable than it is from unfavorable to favorable. So here we have opportunities to do a better job of communicating the actions that are taken, involving employees in the actions to be taken, and really helping keep that topic alive over the course of the, the next time we administer the survey, so helping employees continue to connect the dots. Looking at the 2016 Employee Engagement Index, just by way of explanation, the index items are items that actually belong to other categories, but are combined together in a different way to look at engagement. We see that we have a high average of 79% engagement, 79% favorable across the board. So when we look at that, we also wanted to break, break down the data to look at, how do people experience this? We understand that people experience their employment at the city in different ways, and so we looked at the results by ethnicity and also by gender. So what you see at the bottom of this page are two bar charts that reflect the average, the overall engagement index, if you will, for each of the ethnicities and also for There's some variation, obviously, in the, in the chart for ethnicity, but overall, the average ranges from 73.4% to 85%, which is highly favorable. And when we look at engagement by gender, we see females are more engaged than males. The next slide is the Communication Index, and again, it is made up of four category, or four items, and we see that the results here are lower than what they were for engagement. In other words, people were not as favorable about communication as they were about engagement. Couple of thoughts here, as far as Communication Index by ethnicity, we see a, a drop overall, the lowest being, the lowest ethnic group to respond, a favorable response is 52%. Goes from 52% to 63%. While that's not terrible, there's lots of work to be done here. A couple of things I would point out about the items that are included in this index. Number eight, I'm comfortable discussing concerns with my immediate supervisor. What we see is that the supervisor-employee relationship is very strong, and you see